Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, August 20th, 2018. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, Wu, Mayor Marlin.
Here. Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meeting of August 6th, 2018. Is there a motion for approval? Moved by Erin.
I'll second that.
Seconded by...
Dean.
Dean.
Sorry.
Any corrections? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, we have public input. Before we have the presentation by Tim Bartlett of the Urbana Park District, I wanted to indicate that Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood continually to be concerned about the Dr. Ellis Sewer problem. They choose not to address the council. And John Hall is here from Champagne County Zoning Administrator, and he's here to answer questions that the council may have about the text amendment on solar farms in Champagne County. Thanks, John. Okay, we have Tim Bartlett, Executive Director of the Urbana Park District, and he's going to give us an update on their strategic plan, which of course has direct impact on all parts of the city of Urbana.
Thank you, Mayor Marlin.
Slideshow?
Yep, looking for it.
Go up, and then to the menus.
Yep, up there. Over.
Over.
Good evening all, I'm Tim Bartlett, Executive Director of the Urbana Park District. Had a great meeting a couple of weeks ago, meeting Carol Mitten, when she came to Urbana. We started talking about a lot of our trail projects and things that we're all working on, and she invited me to come and update the council, and I said I'd love to come if I could also talk about our strategic plan goals, because our trail things and connectivity's all wound into that. So if you'll indulge me a few extra minutes, I can give you an update on that as well. We're working on our update to our strategic plan. Our last one was done in 2006, 2007, that included a new master plan for Crystal Lake Park. We've been very successful with our initiatives there. We've been able to move our operations facility out of the park and over to the Kerr Street facility at Chief Schimager. Been able to build the new Crystal Lake Park Family Aquatic Center, a lot of park improvements. We passed two referendums to help us do that. So now we're getting ready to recommit to our next level of work. Some things we found in our strategic work is we really want to start putting shorter time windows, about five years, linking them to our capital budgets. Some plans, like our last one, obviously went over, you know, many years, and I think our residents kind of forget, or get disconnected, or if you have new people, come to the community, they're not necessarily in tune with all the heavy planning that has gone on, you know, in previous years. So we've been focused on that. We have really four areas that we're looking at. One is continue our work at Crystal Lake Park. Two is extend the KRT, the Kickoo Rail Trail, into downtown Urbana, and hopefully beyond. Working with our underrepresented neighborhoods and residents, and also planning to build a new health and wellness facility. So to kind of kick us off, starting with some inspiration, we always think of Joseph Blair. He was our first board president, actually an immigrant, came to Urbana via Nova Scotia, Canada. He was brought here and worked in the horticulture department, also developed landscape architecture skills, and developed several of our early parks. Some neat things about Joseph, obviously, he designed the first parts of Crystal Lake Park, Carl Park also. He established the Illinois State Park System, the first state park in Fort Masick was established with Mr. Blair's help. He allegedly rode his horse down from Urbana down to Fort Masick and developed the site there. And he led the effort to plant about over 6,000 trees in Urbana, so had quite an impressive career. So when we think of how do we get things done, or who did get things done, we look back to Joseph. Obviously, looking at Crystal Lake Park is our first interest, just looking at the older facilities we had there, that's the old boathouse. I'm not sure if anybody was around back then, but it served the park district really well. It was kind of the entertainment center, as we understand, in Urbana. Dances, parties, get-togethers, barbecues were held there. Obviously, the lake was a key, critical part of our history in Urbana. I've seen this slide lots of times, and I noticed in the far-left corner, there's actually a person in the boat, sitting right there. But we were really looking at old photos to really get a better feel for the characteristics of the park, how many trees, what did the lake edge look like. Obviously, it's had a variety of lives in its history, and has changed quite a bit. Here's an old picture of the old shelter, the large pavilion at the top of the hill. Obviously, it fell into disrepair and had to be removed. Quite a beautiful structure. And again, the iconic park roads with the large shade trees really make up the characteristics of Crystal Lake Park. Playgrounds, a lot of interest in playgrounds. This is a shot from the old days, but obviously, we have a couple of play options in the park today. Our nature play near the Need a Purpose Nature Center is wonderful, if you haven't been there, please check it out. And obviously, programming and events, this example of old-time ideas of programming and fun during the Chautauqua days at Crystal Lake Park, but we have different interests today. Just a little focus on the southern portion of the park. We, by the way, have done quite a bit of work on the north side. We've got the nature center, Buzy Woods, the nature play, Crystal Lake Park Family Aquatic Center built. So if you really go up to the park today and look at the north side, and then compare it to the south side, you'll see a very big difference. Today, the lake has a lot of issues. It's a large detention basin for Urbana, picks up a very large watershed area that goes clear up by I-74 on Lincoln Avenue, all the way to the park. In this north end of the, the north end of the lake is called the sediment basin. We worked very cooperatively with the city's help to remove, that was our first phase of the lake work, to remove all the sediment out of that. We took about 85 semi-trucks full of sediment out of that basin, and it's being stored at the Urbana landfill. It's being turned and treated there. Hopefully, if it's tested and is able to stay there, it'll be planted in on the site. Obviously, if it still has any toxic characteristics, we'll have to remove it, and it'll be taken to a special landfill. But by being able to store it there at the landfill site, saved the park district several hundred thousand dollars. Obviously, we're still waiting for the full report on that, but another example of great cooperation with the city and the park district. One of the key elements of the park, or the lake plan though, is to really look at the edges. If you go to the park today, you can't really see the water. There isn't a place to walk to get around the lake, or walk down by the water. So what you'll see in this plan is lots of trails that wrap, both paved trails and soft trails, seating areas, naturalized landscapes, redesigned and reconfigured lakehouse area, short loop walk over in the west woods, to really provide the kind of amenities that people want, and we believe will bring back to Crystal Lake Park. This is an example of what it looks like today. If you can see this along the Broadway edge, a lot of erosion, certainly, we have some geese issues, although we're managing, have been managing the geese pretty intensively for the last four or five years. This is what we hope it to look like. Seating areas that could be dedicated for, you know, leisure, activities, programming, education, again, getting people right down to the water. Some things you'll notice, the characteristic shade trees, and the wide plantage, plant shelf along the edge of the lake. This area is looking around the lakehouse area, you can see the docks in the forefront down, get my cursor here, down in this area, looking across to what we refer to as the beach area, that's sort of the wide-open area on the other side. Obviously, it can be transformed into something more like this, again, wide sweeping paths, areas you can step down to fish, get up close to the lake. Those are kind of the comments we hear most often, can we walk or get down to the water, and can we interact with the water? So we think that's very important. Another issue, as I mentioned, invasive species that cloud the lake edge. Obviously, water quality is one of our challenges, keeping good quality water there. Hard to do with stormwater, hard to do with runoff and a large geese population. Again, transfer that into the regraded, shallow-planted edges around the lake with pathways, again, to bring more people, more nature down to the area. This new area, we're hoping to install a boat launch, is what it looks like today. Again, a lot of erosion, riprap has been placed there, you know, just to keep the edges stable. This is what we hope to transform that into. I should mention too, over to the right of the image, you'll see the park road. That was one of the elements we definitely wanted to keep in the park, because we know people like to drive through the park, particularly older adults, that allows them to still get out and experience the seasonal change. We're really doing some engineering to look, to see if we can split that road. Could we create a one-lane pedestrian bike lane, and the other an auto? So we're doing a transportation study now to make sure we could do that safely. This transformation's been done at many other parks, Washington Park and Springfield, they've done this, and they've actually closed the park road, I think it's only open to cars two or three days, because pedestrians have come back and sort of reclaimed the park. So again, it's another way to utilize the park road, the main artery, but give it over, or at least share it with bikes and pets. Obviously, the kayak launch will be the new feature here, you'll be able to bring your kayaks, we'll have them for rent also at the lakehouse. So adding new opportunities and areas to get connected. Looking across, you can't really see it, but behind the massive trees there in the middle of the image, is the make-up water fountain, which is intended to pull up water to keep the lake level stable, and the wear bridge across from that. Like to transform that into a different type of water feature, again, highly naturalized, create more habitat for wildlife, open up the bridges, widen the decks, the decking across, so you can get more people across, safely make it more accessible, and again, kind of turn in from a make-up pump system into a park amenity or feature. And then the lakehouse, that'll be a later phase, but one of the issues we have, the lakehouse, is it's not very big. It's not the largest building. So rather than try to enlarge the building, which we don't really have real estate, a lot of area to expand, we decided to expand, extend the outdoor areas. So we'll have larger seating areas, new decks, you can kind of see, kind of introducing rock walls, seating areas, informal places for people to hang up. Open up the vistas, so you can see from the east to the west side. Over on this west-side drop-off, set that up so that cars can drop off and make events and activities inside the lakehouse a little more easy to manage. Here's another look across the lake, looking back at the lakehouse, you can kind of see where the pathways come in, bring you across the Memorial Bridge, that would be, again, widened and opened up so you can see, and then a much larger landscape and outdoor area for events and activities. Moving on, connectivity. One of the greatest things, we think, that we have now as an amenity in Urbana is the Kickoo Rail Trail. It doesn't take a lot of imagination, though. Last summer, was working with my landscape architecture intern from my class, we started looking at, you know, Crystal Lake Park is a destination, how many other places can you get to or connect to from there? And so we just did a quick smattering of a few downtown connections. Some things we started to notice is, we've got some really strong connections with the saline that goes through the park there, we've got University Avenue that's very nearby, and then this extended rail line, this black line that sort of bisects that area too. So we started taking a little more intense look, had been talking with Mayor Marlin shortly after she came on, about what can we make of that? And we said we'll take some stabs at it, and kind of see what we can develop here. So we started looking at some just draft ideas of, this is Lincoln and University Avenue, and started looking at, how can we transform and extend that trail project, so that we can extend it right up to the edge of campus there at Lincoln? Obviously, it would go from where it stops right now, out by Weaver Park on East Main Street, but you could punch it through, can see some of the iconic elements, the Kickoo logos, and the mileage markers, things like that, that we're trying to put together to really give that a characteristic look. Opportunities for new businesses and new development along there. Also, we were communicating with Carl at the time, looking at what opportunities are for the Carl campus, right there. And you can see on the left in this image, not a very attractive, there's a rail line there, my understanding, there's two trains a week that serve the DART and the Mulsico facilities, but you can sort of see these desire lines. I know the mayor had walked it, and I think she even timed it from downtown Urbana to Carl's, like 12 minutes. So that would suggest people could get downtown, have lunch, if there was easy, attractive ways to get them there. And so in this image, you can see kind of opening up the fences, introducing a trail. By the way, if the rail cars still continue to operate there, we're very aware of other rail corridors that have side-by-sides, so you can have walking trails, biking trails, some sort of divider, and an active trail line. There's a number of examples, we've done research. Obviously, working with the rail companies are, you know, it's very difficult work, it takes a long time. I know I've worked about 17 years myself on the KRT to bring that into Urbana, but we think it's something definitely worth working toward, and Carl definitely saw an interest in that as well. Looking kind of back east, if you look all the way down the tracks here in the older photo, you can see the station theater kind of there at that midway point. Obviously, an opportunity to kind of transform that, make that more of a landscaped area with seating and shade trees, and, you know, create this real community corridor. And then looking over nearby my office at Leo Park, you know, there's massive trees here, this is the Ray Street section where it intersects with the rail corridor, kind of a nighttime image of what could this look like at nighttime? So picture strolling downtown Ray Street, you're near the Silver Creek Restaurant, right across the street, having a lighted way that would get people from maybe campus town back and forth, could see new development. In this scheme, there's more of a plaza, but it could be a building, it could be housing, could be a lot of things. Then in this image, moving back up closer to the Carl, Lincoln Avenue area, you know, very kind of old look of existing warehouse-style buildings, that could be transformed more into active offices, or, you know, we took a little liberty here and had some public art installed along to liven that up. But again, art, sculpture, paintings, live performances, things that really draw people out and get them out and about. Moving along, back out east, related to the KRT, where we are today, this image on the left is the aerial. On the north side, we have the eight-acre Commissioner Grove, we have some soft trails cut through the prairie that we've established, we have the eight-acre watershed basin that collects all the stormwater from another very large watershed area, creating this wonderful bird habitat. And then to the south, projected open fields, you can see on the right, our older master plan we did in early 2000s, again, soccer complex, ball fields to the south, kind of a nice mix of a nature park and an athletic-type park. This image, and I think our work here, really excited Illinois Department of Natural Resources, they're using Weaver Park as a model to promote active recreation with more naturalized site. The old, old days of design, you kept your active things in active parks, your nature things in nature parks, and we like to blend the lines and bring both things together. This is, right now on the north end of the park, is one of the stations, sorry, let me get this clicked back, our Trailhead Park in Weaver Park, 60-acre site out on East Main Street. We've developed about a 30-car parking space with some accessible parking, porta restrooms, a bike fix-it station, we'll be adding signage and landscape, some trees out there, but it's really exciting, you can now walk or take your bike to Weaver Park and hop on the KRT. From that part, taking the East Main Street spur. You can obviously go out to Walmart, that's another option, so anybody that doesn't, isn't maybe comfortable with sort of a, how do I get to the park and then out directly to the trail, you could take your bike or, and catch the trail right there at the Walmart site. But we think having an in-town Trailhead Park is really critical, and will support future events and activities out at the Weaver Park site. Again, we have nearby Prairie Park, which is 22 acres, 60 acres at Weaver Park, the Prairie Campus of Schools is down on that end, so a very large open space area. Now shifting into the underrepresented groups, for the last several years, we've had a tagline that we call "You Belong Here." And we really mean that. In a divided world like today, we think it's ever more important that we continue to message to our residents and others that come to us that everybody belongs. And so we're trying to reestablish and strengthen that culture in what we do. One of the things we did back in March, starting in March 2016, all the way through January 2017, is we worked with the University of Illinois and the Diversity Lab in putting together a study or analysis on impressions of underrepresented residents. So we primarily interviewed and surveyed African-Americans, Asians, and Hispanics in our community. While we didn't, we always want larger, much more extensive samples, we did get quite a bit of information. We found out that there are a lot of barriers and disconnects. So one of the things we did was kind of rearrange our staffing and hired some new staff person to help us, creating the outreach and wellness department. So we have dedicated staff that can help with that level of programming, we're doing a lot of outreach, we've had a lot of success so far. Some things we looked at, obviously, the barriers, the typical ones, transportation, financial or cost barriers to participation, language and cultural barriers, informational, meaning can people get the brochure, can they read it, can, is our online information correct, how do we deal with impressions of different languages? Certainly, there's others, but those were the main things. So on the right, you can see our whiteboard exercise, the green items, if you look real close, are the things we do currently, and all the blue ones are things we would like to try, things that we think would be successful. Few examples that we've already done, I don't have my glasses on so I can see, we've started putting parts of our brochure in other languages, Spanish is our first, but we're looking at French. Obviously, we've used t-shirts and other ways to communicate, putting information, or "You Belong Here" in German or Chinese. One of the things we had, I think it was last summer, a Chinese woman came into the Phillips Rec Center and just burst into tears because she saw the t-shirts, and she could read in her own native Chinese language, "You Belong Here." So we know that resonates with a lot of residents. And we're focusing on a lot of free, fun activities. We've rearranged our brochure, we do smaller, kind of fold-out panel types for the summer, so that we can easily get into the hands of residents, what's happening that's fun and free. So we think that's really critical. Obviously, there's a lot of paid things, people can do it all over this community, but we want to make sure we're offering some things, you know, that people can actually access. And also, I should mention, on the park sites, working to post the bus routes, and not just the, but basically tell people what buses to hop on to get to various parks and facilities. New approaches to programming. One of the things we're doing, here's some examples of some new programs we've done, playdays in the park are really just pop-ups. We go out to a park, say at Weaver Park, with several neighborhoods that are out of the city and can't benefit our in-district rates, we just do fun playthings. We've done some interesting new programs, like the First Aid, the Herbal First Aid, the Community Palooza was an opportunity to attract African-Americans to the Crystal Lake Pool that maybe have not been there. And we also see the gentleman in that photo there, that's our first shared staff that we hired collectively with Clark Lindsey Village. The goal wasn't to try to increase people living at Clark Lindsey Village, but they're very forward-thinking in doing outward and exterior programming. How can we serve our older populations better in Urbana? And we know that older adults, teens are also, also can be underrepresented, they're hard to program for, so again, we want to continue in that vein. Partnerships, a lot of new partners we have here, we've worked with them in the past, but we've reestablished new ways of working together. We have many others, this is just an example of some that we've been working with recently. Obviously, facility improvements to reach those underrepresented and get more of the kind of activities that people want to do. One example is some facility improvements at the Phillips Rec Center. Taking the old, kind of the old-fashioned senior space and turning it into an active cooking kitchen. That was one of the feedback items we got from underrepresented folks, learning more cultural styles of cooking, cooking American-style, looking for cooking for health, and we just don't have the facilities to do that, so we'll be able to do that at that facility. And the last element that I had mentioned was health and wellness. We recently did a tour, we looked about at 15 or 16 different health and wellness facilities up in northern Illinois, near the Chicago area, and also in central Illinois. We found communities much smaller than Urbana that had comprehensive health and wellness facilities, and what we found is, they're really the new place to go, they're the active place. Our older adults want to stay active, drop in places for teens. Basically, these type of facilities are programmed from 5:30, 6:00 in the morning, all the way till midnight. And basically, they rotate the groups in, your early exercisers, the morning groups, the, you know, the homeschool groups, throughout the noon hour, after-school programming into the evening for younger adults, organized sports and athletics, and then all the way up into special events and rentals in the evening. Currently, we're, our gym spaces at the Brookins Administrative Center, but it's a one-gym facility, so you can only do one activity at a time. We did put a curtain in the gym, so you could maybe play two volleyball games or two basketball games, but you can't have a place for teens to drop in, or people just to come walk, like in these elevated tracks. And so all these newer facilities generally had elements that they tried to program for free or very low cost, to really reduce that barrier to get people active. But again, what we've found is, they're the new teen center, the new senior center, the place that people want to gather and get, come together for exercise and for fun. Obviously, our neighbors have some facilities, the Leonard Center in Champaign, obviously the YMCA, which is a private facility, they have over 10,000 members, they're bursting at the seat, I think maybe it's up to 12,000, they're going to be building more space. And the Champaign Park District's adding their second facility, the Martin Center on the north side of Champaign. So we want to definitely be tracking what our neighbors are doing, but again, these are the kind of feedback ideas that we've received. That's a lot of information and a lot of slides, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And again, we look forward to working with any partners, we're talking with a lot of different groups, we definitely partner with the city on trails and connectivity, so we look forward to that.
Erin, you had a question?
Yes, yes.
Thanks, Tim, for the presentation. That's hot. So the number-one question I get is, why can't we get rid of that green stuff?
Actually, the green stuff are native plants, we've got, it's called duck meal and water meal. They're two native plants, but because the water, the make-up water that we actually draw from one of our pumps to keep the water level, is very high in phosphorus. Also, in stormwater, water runoff, we have about a 65-acre watershed around the park that we take water in, so there's a lot of chemicals, nitrogen, things like that. Also, the geese and the trees and nutrients that drop leaves and organic matter, make that a very organic material. So we do have the native plant growth, it's just in, it's too many, it's too much. And so we're, right now, we've started alum treatments as a way, it's a aluminum-based chemical to help bring the pHs down and to try to slow and stop some of that growth. We're also, we also know that redesigning the lake edges, keeping, managing the water that comes into the lake first, pre-treatments will help. Large plant shelves that take up those nutrients will really help that. But the goal is really to reduce the nutrients in the water, so it's not such a rich element for everything to grow in. Now, when the algae starts, that can be problematic. Last summer, we had a couple of closures of the lake because of the toxic algae and the concern there. So we do have to manage that very carefully. We've started a very aggressive goose management process, we are permitted by DNR, we oil the eggs, we have decoys, we put the beacons in the lake, we're using dogs right now that are highly effective. What we've found is, most things, the geese can habituate to. Dogs are probably the more aggressive, they don't attack, and they just basically, their presence scares the geese and they relocate, essentially. But what we've found in working with DNR is, we have to really employ all these techniques to manage our geese. We're hoping that we can attract other landowners to start making responsible decisions about how they manage their areas. Collectively, as a region, we need to work together to help bring that down. They are protected animals, so we can't just go round them up, or shoot them, or what have you. So working in that confines with the water that we bring in, the water that runs in, and what lives there, it's quite challenging. We think with our new development, though, we can improve that.
So you've said quite a bit, and I wrote down quite a few things, because this has been a hot topic for me and some other people. So the geese, okay, I like geese a lot, but sometimes they could just fly across the street, they don't have to walk across the street on Lincoln Avenue, they really could just fly across the street. So the toxicity that you spoke of, what does that mean, when you say the sediment that was taken away was, there's some concerns around toxicity?
PAHs, poly, I'd have to spell it all out, but basically, it's runoff from the roads, the materials that we put on our driveways, the asphalt coatings that we put on, basically has a chemical in it, so when it runs off from everywhere in Urbana and ends up in the lake, it concentrates. And so in taking that out, it comes out with the sediment. To make it less toxic and actually be able to use as a planting medium, it has to be out and exposed to the sun. So when the sun breaks it down, that brings the toxicity down. So our plan is to continue to windrow it, basically expose it to sun, as it dries and the sun does its treatment, you'll see the volatility go down. Obviously, it'll be tested, if it still is high, we would have to take it to a special If it still is high, we would have to take it to a special landfill. And I should mention, all of our lakes, rivers, and streams have this impairment. We also know there's mercury concerns in the lake. It's just the nature of our Illinois water system. IDNR has consumption advisories on every lake and stream in Illinois, basically letting people know how infrequent they should actually be eating, you know, the fish out of that. And again, we wish we could totally clean up the water and not have those concerns, but it's all part of our urban stormwater.
So that was the gist of my questioning around the water, is that the designs that you've seen, that you've shown, and I appreciate the vision, looks very enticing and looks like it would be a great change for us, but it all centers around the water quality. So are you saying that this proposal or what you've shown us here tonight would take place and would move forward prior to getting this water under control?
Yes. We have really two issues, the runoff and sort of the sedimentation of the lake and the erosion of the lake edges, and then the water quality issue. So we would like to move ahead. We hope to have a project bid to do at least Phase One of lake edge restoration. Obviously, how much we can get done will be based on our bid prices, but we've been saving our capital dollars for this first big phase. We're also doing fundraising. You know, it's a multimillion-dollar project, so it'll take several phases to try to get into place. But really, you have to start doing both at the same time. Airators, getting the water moving around definitely will help. We're hoping we might be able to get water source from a different level of aquifer. So if we aren't pulling out the high phosphorus amount that we are today, that would certainly help that. And then looking at any type of chemical treatments, you know, certainly to help is really critical. Much larger issues that the state and the United States would need to deal with is the mercury issue. Obviously, that comes from coal being burned, medical waste, which we had nearby for, you know, many, many years at the hospital, and automobiles. Their exhaust kicks out mercury and it builds up. And so that's a much bigger issue. Doesn't mean that you can't use the lake, you can't, you know, boat, that you can't fish, but really, it's probably consuming the fish. So that's something we, we're getting more information from DNR. Again, the state has very limited signage. They're grappling with this also, so we're trying to move ahead of what's the best sort of advisory information we could post at the lake, you know, to remind people. Again, officially, there already are limitations through DNR at every, you know, river, stream in the state. So it's not just unique to Urbana or Crystal Lake.
Yeah, and I don't want to make it seem like, you know, that that's the case. That's not what I'm trying to get at. It's just that the significance and the beauty of what I saw and for people wanting to be in the water and to be active around the water, it just seems to me that we would really need to get a firm handle on that and then start to move some things forward. Because we've, just for full transparency, we've had many conversations about the water quality in Crystal Lake for many, many years, right? And so, and we've had great ideas that were supposed to help us address those concerns. And if we still saying, well, we hope this will work and then this probably will work too, and then we're going to use $10 million of the taxpayers' money for a project that centers around the water quality, but we haven't had, we don't have a firm grasp on that, I'm a little concerned about that.
Right. I think everyone, Aaron and the state, is concerned about that. I don't think you'll see a community in Illinois that has totally figured out how to deal with those water quality issues. So again, we can't wait. We have to get, you know, the park restored and stop some of the degradation going on, but at the same time, continue to look for solutions for water quality. And again, we have some at hand, the treatments, using alternative water sources, reducing the sediment, educating our residents about what they're dumping on their lawns and down their, you know, storm drains. It all ends up in Crystal Lake. So we like to suggest it's everybody's need and urgency to try to improve that. We wish there was a poison pill or a magic thing you could just do, but it's really the combination of everything working together. So getting things to improve it, getting the water quality to continue to, you know, improve itself is definitely something we want to start. And we also share that same concern. We visited probably, probably 15 or 20 different lake stream-type projects, and everybody is sort of grappling with these issues, erosion, sedimentation, chemical impacts on the water system, wildlife issues. And so it's, I think it's just a place we are right now, and we hope we can improve that.
Last thing for me.
We've got...
Just got one more.
One more quick question.
All right. So the language translation...
Yes.
And the "you belong here," which I think is a great idea. Who's doing the translation for the other languages for you all?
Right now, we're trying to work with the community to find people. We've connected with like Congolese group, some Asian, like Korean. It's difficult because getting it in the right words and finding people that are willing and able to do that, obviously, we haven't hired staff, you know, that can do that. So just trying to work through connections. Anybody knows people, let us know. We'd love to reach out, but it's probably, the key is not just one time, but the consistency of can we get the information, you know, relayed in a different way. Some of our hospitals have different systems. They have more staff, but they've created more ways to try to communicate. We also, as a start, there are some digitized programs that you can use at registration, so it can help people at that moment, you know, to get them hopefully at least registered. But that's something we want to continue to work with. Schools are doing some good work on that, too, so we can borrow their successes. Thank you.
Aaron, or Eric, you had a question?
Yeah. Is, how significant a fraction of the nutrient problem is runoff from what people put on their lawns and their gardens?
It's probably hard for us to tell, just because it comes through really the same few pipes that lead into the park. So being able to sort of separate the inputs, probably the closest we've gotten is the makeup water. We've been able to test that and determine that it's high in phosphorus. Certainly drilling down to the Mohammed Aquifer and using some of our best water isn't our first choice, but there might be something in between there. Might look at different well locations. There are very few because we've looked at that, but we're continuing to look at that as well.
I guess the real point, the policy point of my question is, is that, I guess you just don't know how significant it is. So my follow-up question was, is it significant enough to warrant some kind of public education program about the, about that as a load on the Crystal Lake water quality?
Absolutely. And I think, you know, we do some of that at the Anita Purvis Nature Center, you know, with our younger kids, but reaching our older adults, you know, households and families would be critical. We have tested the water, so we do know its makeup. But I totally agree with that, having information and education to really make people aware so that they can at least reduce, stop, slow down, or just be aware of what they're actually doing to contribute to that.
Decades ago, I lived in Cleveland, and there was a big campaign about what kind of detergent to use to reduce the nutrient load on Lake Erie. So I guess this is kind of the same problem.
Absolutely.
That could be something our Sustainability Advisory Commission might be able to give some advice on. And we do do the pesticide-free lawn push every, actually coming up soon. So we could look at that. Okay, well, thank you. And one more question. And then we will move on.
Yeah, I have a few questions or comments. The water quality challenge, of course, is something we all notice. I know that the fairgrounds put in a little detention basin that was supposed to capture first flush from the parking lot. Didn't really do that. They did some adjustments. I actually went out during this last flood, this last rain and looked at it, and it's doing better, but you know, a lot of it's going straight into the, straight into the basin that goes straight into the lake. So that could probably still be improved some more. Just wondering about the other runoff from the other sides of the fairgrounds, like from the stock use. I know they used to actually spread the bedding, used bedding out on the grass there.
Right.
And that must contain a lot of phosphorus and stuff.
We're aware of that also.
Have they discontinued that?
I don't know their full operation practices. We'd like to learn more. Anything we could do, you know, cooperatively to see if they could help with that. But yes, we've identified that as a potential source. Again, haven't done any extensive testing, but doesn't take a lot of thought to assume there could be some, you know, runoff basically from that as well.
Do you have another drainage project planned for the north end by the new building that they built there? Something that would make the runoff go into the stream instead of the lake?
We do not.
Okay.
I think, but certainly, we'd like to work with them in doing anything we could do. Basically, as most of, many of us know, you know, catching it first, treating it, or at least containing it would definitely help the situation before it gets in the large body of water.
And then with the planning grant for the rail, the rail trail?
Yes.
I think all the pictures you showed, showed it pretty much without the rail.
Yes.
But as part of the planning grant, will you also consider how to put the trail with the rail?
Absolutely, right. Obviously, it's more attractive and gets people excited to think of that, but you know, if that was something that had to continue, the coexisting or co-terminous rail, or rail trails can work. Obviously, safety is, you know, a concern, but it's not like they're high-speed commuter trains, you know, zipping through downtown.
Oh, yeah, and twice a week and usually late at night, I think.
Right. And I don't want to minimize that either, but we know it can be done safely.
Okay, I just want to make sure that as part of the planning grant, we weren't planning for something that had to make the trains go away and have to wait 20 years for that to happen, so.
Right.
And then I've also, I appreciate Elsie coming to the L-NAC meeting. She's been really helpful with the neighborhood involvement and some of the activities they've had.
Great.
You know, having professional planners there to help plan activities for the kids during these neighborhood events has really been helpful, so we really appreciate her work on that. That's, I think that covers most of it. And, oh, for the interpretation, I guess maybe the immigration project, they have interpreters. They've offered their services before. Are you guys involved with the welcoming community?
Yes.
Okay. So you could probably find interpreters and do that.
Right. Again, keeping them consistent so we can, you know, rely on them. That'll be the key. But again, if you know of others, let us know. Thank you for that.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Tim. One question?
One very quick question. All right, so I'm very cognizant of the fact that we have a huge turnover going on in August in all of our communities. So I'm curious, you were talking about populations that are underrepresented. Do you reach out to this huge population in August? And if so, what do you do to bring these people?
Probably not necessarily in August, but we work with, I think that was just mentioned, YM, campus-wide, they do the big welcoming week. So that's probably one of our bigger outreaches to kind of do a coordinated. While that's wonderful, and we should continue to do that, the park district staff is concerned, you know, what happens after that? Do we have more activity? So we look for every opportunity and sort of organized opportunity, but we're looking for more and doing our more. Things we've talked about, maybe a welcome-back picnic as a way to capture, or working in neighborhoods, you know, to create different activities that they're interested in doing. So would love to do more and would be open to that.
Okay.
So if you have more ideas, let me know. I'm sure we could talk a long time on this. I know you have a full agenda, but if you have other ideas or concerns or think of something, please reach out or speak with Mayor Marlin or Carol, and I'd be happy to respond.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
We have no unfinished business to cover, so we'll go on to reports of standing committees. Councilmember Eric Jacobson.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I will move Resolution Number 2018-08-038R, which is a resolution authorizing entry into Electronic Document Recording Service Agreement, an electronic filing agreement for filing documents with the Champaign County Recorder's Office, which came to us from the legal department.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? Mary Alice?
So last week, I had asked how much, how many documents approximately we have a year, and you guys said that you would give me a number.
Yeah, I sent an email earlier, but I, yeah, it was about two...
He sent it today. I've been at work all day.
I'm sorry. It's my fault. Even though it fluctuates, it's about 200 from all of the various departments.
And if I remember correctly, it's $3, so 600 bucks.
Yes.
Roughly. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Ammons...
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And who?
Yes.
That motion passes.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move Ordinance Number 2018-08-054, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Sections 253, 2-54, 2-55, 2-69, 2-70, 2-71, and 2-129 regarding city administrative positions. And these are changes to reflect changes in officer titles. Comes from Legal Department and Office of the Mayor.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons...
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And who?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Eric. Reports of special committees. Seeing none. Reports of officers. Seeing none. New business. First on the list is Resolution Number 2018-08-039R, Resolution of Protest Against a Proposed Text Amendment to the Champaign County Zoning Ordinance, and this is related to solar farms. Marcus Ritchie will present.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening. So before you is a text amendment proposed by the, or requested by the Champaign County zoning administrator to add PV solar farm as a new principal use under the category industrial uses, electric power generating facilities, and allow that a PV solar farm may be authorized by county board special use permit in the Ag 1 and Ag 2 zoning districts. This amendment would allow for the development of large and medium-scale PV solar arrays in the unincorporated areas of Champaign County. The proposed amendment is of interest to the City of Urbana to the extent that it will affect zoning and land use development decisions within the city's one-and-a-half-mile extraterritorial jurisdictional area. It is the city council's responsibility to review the proposed amendment to determine what impact it may have on the city and decide whether or not to protest the proposed text amendment. Under state law, a municipal protest of the proposed amendment would require a three-quarter supermajority of affirmative votes for approval of the request at the county board. Otherwise, a simple majority would be required. Currently, the Champaign County zoning ordinance does not address any size of PV solar array. For comparison, the City of Urbana's zoning ordinance treats PV solar arrays as a mechanical system and requires that their use is accessory to an existing principal use. The city currently has no zoning regulations permitting or regulating principal use, utility, or community-scale solar energy systems analogous to the PV solar farms interested in siting in the county. City staff reviewed and summarized the proposed text amendment language to determine potential impacts to land within the city's current or extraterritorial jurisdictions, or for potential impacts to the city's ability to plan or manage development. And this was included in Exhibit A2. The proposed changes to the county zoning ordinance that are most relevant to the City of Urbana are that it would prohibit locating a PV solar farm in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction unless it is also outside of the city's contiguous urban growth area and is at least one-half mile from any municipal boundary. So looking at Exhibit D, this shows, in red, is the city's one-and-a-half-mile extraterritorial jurisdictional area. One of the other provisions in the proposed text amendment was that no solar farm would be permitted to site within a one-half-mile buffer area around the city's current or future corporate boundaries. So that one-and-a-half-mile buffer is this area in blue, this shaded blue area. Kind of overlaying that area in many places, PV solar farms would not be permitted in the city's contiguous urban growth area. And that is this hatched area here that runs pretty much between, you know, north of Curtis and west of Cottonwood Road and south of Olympian Drive. And this contiguous urban growth area was laid out in the county's 2010 land area, land resource management plan that the city was involved with, at least approving that plan back in 2010. So there are overlaps between the CUGA and this half-mile... So there are overlaps between the CUGA and this half-mile buffer area in which no PV solar farm would be permitted to be built. Uh, staff also reviewed the proposed zoning amendment in respect to the city's comprehensive plan and found five pertinent goals ranging from natural resource preservation to growth management, and believe that the proposed amendment is generally consistent with the plan's goals and objectives. It seeks to increase the availability of renewably generated electricity while reducing the negative impacts to, on existing adjacent residential areas. It also includes measures to protect farmland, natural and cultural resources, and wildlife. Within the city's municipal boundaries, the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment does not directly impact the use of land, nor is it likely to impact the city's ability to manage growth and development within the ETJ. It does create a mechanism of prior notification to the city and an opportunity for the city to submit a resolution to the county regarding the proposed special use permit. Finally, the proposed amendment creates zones in the city's area of ETJ within which a PV solar farm cannot be located. On August 9th of 2018, the Urbana Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend a city council to defeat a resolution of protest contingent on a res, on a condition, if that condition was legal to impose. The commission also suggested that staff may develop other conditions to protect the city's ability to grow. The recommended condition would require the county board to vote with a supermajority to approve a special use permit for a PV solar farm should a municipality submit a resolution of protest. Subsequent to the commission meeting, city staff discussed the question of the county extending a supermajority resolution of protest authority and with the city's legal division and learned that because Champaign County is a non-home rule county, it cannot require more than a simple majority vote for SUP approval. That condition is therefore not included in tonight's staff recommendation. Other discussions centered on the appropriateness of the use of the CUGA shown in the Champaign County Land Resource Management Plan as a no PV solar farm zone. Following the commission meeting, staff found that several aspects of the proposed zoning amendment are under city control to some extent. First, both the one-half-mile no solar farm buffer and the one-and-a-half-mile ETJ buffer are dynamic, growing as the city annexes lands and expands into the unincorporated areas of the county. Second, the primary influence the city has regarding the CUGA's limits is through the comprehensive plan, which designates areas outside the city's corporate limits for future development. City staff also recently learned that the city had reviewed and voted to implement the 2010 Land Resource Management Plan, um, in January of 2010, and that the CUGA was area designated for future urban development. City staff has also learned that none of the seven proposed PV solar farms on the county's case docket are within five miles of the city's current municipal boundary. So looking at the city and its ETJ here, we are looking at the two existing electrical utility substations in Champaign County. We've got one at Sidney, which is almost seven miles away, and we've got one in Rising, which is five-and-a-half miles away. The staff report provides information on the typical PV solar farm connection configuration into the electrical power grid, as well as technical and financial information on the additional costs that would be required to accommodate citing a solar farm away from either of these two existing electrical utility substations, and, um, for that reason, it, although it would be possible for a proposed PV solar farm to cite within the city's ETJ, it would be much less cost-effective than if they cited closer to an existing municipal electrical substation and switchyard. The findings, staff findings, are summarized in the staff report, including that the proposed text amendment is generally compatible with the land use policy goals and objectives of the 2005 Urbana Comprehensive Plan, and that it would not pose significant negative impacts to land uses or to the ability of the city to manage growth and development of land within the city's ETJ. City council has the following options: to defeat a resolution of protest, or defeat a resolution of protest contingent upon specific provisions, or approve a resolution of protest. At its August 9th, 2018 meeting, the Urbana Plan Commission voted 6-0 to recommend that city council defeat a resolution of proposal of protest with one recommendation requiring that the resolution in response to special use permits require a supermajority vote by the county board if such a condition would be legal to impose, based on additional information provided by the city legal division, and due to the protections within one-half mile from the city's boundary and within the CUGA, and due to the economic infeasibility of citing a PV solar farm with the, within the city's ETJ, city staff recommends city council defeat a resolution of protest as presented. And that's the end of the staff report.
Any questions for staff? Jared?
I just got a question. Why this is coming to us now? What brought this up before the Plan Commission?
Champaign County Zoning Administrator proposed a text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance, and text amendments to the county zoning ordinance come to the city to determine if the city wants to submit a resolution of protest, which is an authority granted by the state to review those.
So there's not any evidence that somebody's sniffing around the county looking to build one of these?
There are seven proposals submitted to the county to cite PV solar farms. Uh, Mr. John Hall is here today, the county zoning administrator, and is available to answer questions.
Okay, thanks.
The county board is also due to vote on this on the 23rd of this month, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
Which is why we have it tonight. Yeah. Any other questions? Bill?
Besides the economic viability of citing near a substation, is there a requirement in the zoning ordinance that a farm of a certain size needs to be within a certain distance of the substation?
Uh, in the county zoning ordinance amendment, I do not believe there is a requirement that it cite within a certain distance of a substation, but I would defer to Mr. Hall for that.
He was shaking his head no, so. And then, so I think the U of I farm is 20 acres. Do they have a substation or something they plug into the U of I system with, or how's that economically?
Smaller, smaller solar arrays do not require, uh, technically, an, a electrical substation. They can utilize a three-phase, um, power line if that is available. Or if there isn't one available, they can run one, which is much less expensive than building a whole new electrical substation.
Okay. And then, do you know what the, uh, protocol is if, um, if there were to be a proposal for a substation, um, closer, you know, that we might have to worry about then? Is that a special use in the county? It is, okay. Thanks. Um, and then, do you know how, how these solar farms will be taxed as far as property taxes go?
I do not.
What kind of revenue they'll generate for schools or anything like that in the county, not for Urbana schools?
I, I do not, and that is, I think, outside the purview of the decision-making process.
Well, I think it's only relevant because it's worth considering whether it would be economically viable for someone to, to cite a solar farm, depending on the value of the land. You know, if the value of the land a mile from Urbana is higher for potential other development, then, um, it might not be worth developing a solar farm. So that's my only, only connection there. Um, okay, I think that's all my questions. Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, this is one of those double negatives, so the, um, way to do this would be to move the resolution to get a second, and then the recommended vote per the staff recommendation is nay.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll move, I'll insincerely move the resolution of protest.
Moved by Eric.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, thank the, the thorough process the county went through for that. I didn't watch any of the meetings, but I read about a few of them in the newspaper, and I read some of the material, and I think, the several iterations, you know, discussing decommissioning, I did read that part of the ordinance. It seemed like that was very thoroughly covered, um, and financially, and to make sure that they would have the money to, to do the decommissioning should it occur. Screening, setbacks, noise, I think that was all, uh, really well discussed and considered. So I just wanted to thank you for going through that process.
Was that a hand? No, okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons.
No.
Brown?
No.
Hazen?
No.
Jacobson?
No.
Miller?
No.
Wu?
No.
That motion passes. Uh, no, that motion fails. See, I was confused. It passes by failing. Okay, but it fails. Our next up is Ordinance Number 2018-08-055, which is an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, revising Articles 5, 8, and 11 to combine the MOR Development Review Board and the Design Review Board, and this comes to us from the Plan Commission, Plan Case Number 2346T18. And before our planning manager Lori Pearson presents on this, I just wanted to provide some, some context here, and this will be for this case and probably maybe for some others going forward. Um, City of Urbana currently has 27 boards and commissions. 27. Um, on those boards and commissions are 165 seats that we have to fill with community members, basically, community volunteers to fill all those different boards and commissions. There are also 60 staff places or slots associated with all those boards and commissions. Now, obviously, we don't have 60 different staff members, um, available for that, so staff members fill multiple roles for all of these boards and commissions, and typically, there's at least an administrative support person taking minutes and that sort of thing, setting up the meeting, plus one or more staff, for example, from the Planning Department for Public Works. So each one of these boards and commissions requires, um, a significant amount of, of staff time and a significant amount of time of volunteer time from our community members. They wouldn't function without our community's service. Um, also, many of these meetings are either broadcast live or recorded for later broadcasts, which means we have, um, staff from UTP-TV on hand, and at least five of the boards are also, uh, staff, or there's a seat for a city council member, so, um, some of you are also sitting on those boards and commissions, and I thank you very much for that service. So what this adds up to altogether is a great deal of time, energy, and it translates into expense from the, from the city perspective. So as we're in our, um, looking at our budget and looking for ways to become more effective and efficient in government, one of the things we've been looking at is, is our boards and commissions and how we can, are there ways we can provide the service, um, to the community, get the work done that needs to be done, but in a more efficient and effective manner? So, um, one of the, uh, recommendations that we'll hear from tonight is combining a couple of these, uh, boards, and Lori will take it over.
Thank you very much. So in response to not only that call for increased efficiency, but also from some members of these actual boards who asked staff if we could look at combining them, I'm presenting a zoning ordinance text amendment to combine the MOR Development Review Board with the Design Review Board. So just as a little refresher, uh, the areas that we're discussing are the districts. The MOR District, which is a mixed-office residential district, that's an actual zoning district centered pretty much around Green Street and Elm Street, um, and also this little piece, um, off of Race Street. The Lincoln-Bucy Corridor, which is along, as you can imagine, Lincoln and Bucy from Illinois to Pennsylvania, and the East Urbana Review District, or Overlay Review District, which is just off of Main Street behind the city building a bit. So those are the three areas that we're talking about that these boards currently look at. In particular, the MOR Development Review Board looks at projects in the MOR zoning district. It currently consists of seven members. Four of those members are the same people or the same positions that sit on the Design Review Board. Uh, whereas the Design Review Board focuses just on the Lincoln-Bucy Corridor and the East Urbana Design Review Overlay District. Also with seven members, like I said, four members shared with the MOR Development Review Board. Uh, each of these boards have very similar structures, as you can see. They also have very similar processes. The guidelines all differ a little bit, so this amendment is not getting into the guidelines at all. It is really, this amendment really is just to take the process and put them into one, under one board. So, uh, the way that we're proposing that's done is to have that single board called the Design Review Board. They would review all projects in all three districts, the MOR, the Lincoln-Bucy, and East Urbana. It would maintain the same type of representation that is on each existing board, and you might ask, how do you take seven plus seven and still get a seven-member board? Um, since there are four that are the same, uh, there were also some reduction in representation in MOR, because otherwise, the Design Review Board would have more representation from MOR than from the other districts. So what we decided we could do is propose to have, I, something that I don't think we've done here before, but have a board that is consistent of, or consists of seven regular members and two alternate members. So the same people that are on the boards today can continue to participate, but an alternate member wouldn't be needed unless a regular member is unable to attend a meeting or perhaps needs to recuse themselves because they are involved in the project in some way. And I will say with a board like this that we often have difficult time making quorum because, um, it doesn't meet very regularly, and we don't always have full seats, so having some alternate members would be really helpful to make quorum. So that's something that we would like to try with this board, because it does two things. Helps us with quorum, makes it more efficient for people putting in applications, but also it maintains everyone that's on the boards now in a seat in some capacity. So the other changes that are proposed are outlined in the memo. A lot of them just to fix, well, if this isn't consistent with that, how do you make it consistent? So I've addressed that in the memo. Also, a number of tweaks to make the language consistent in and of itself, as well as, um, you know, just standard legal practice with how language is done in, in ordinance language. But the bulk of the changes really is in the structure, so I wanted to make sure I focused on that. Uh, when Plan Commission considered this item, they did that at their August 9th meeting. They voted unanimously to recommend approval to city council, and staff would, of course, recommend approval.
Any questions for Lori? Eric?
This is just arithmetic. If I, if, if there are four members overlap and seven on each, that adds up to 10 people rather than nine.
So, um, if you want to turn to, it might be easier for me to point to the language in the memo rather than explain it. If you want to, uh, look at page two, at the bottom of the page, it goes over the proposed membership. It suggests that there would be three individuals out of a, a group of four categories, because frankly, we've had a hard time finding folks to fit in these categories. So, um, we currently, for instance, only have three out of these four represented today. So it is suggesting that three individuals representing four of these categories be either on the board as a regular member or as an alternate. So it is, um, so I think I did the math right. So you've got the four standard members of the representative from the Plan Commission, a representative from Historic Preservation, an architect, a local developer, and then, uh, so that's four, and then three out of this four. So that makes a total of seven, plus two alternate members from those same categories.
But is, doesn't that still leave out one individual who is serving? You've got a total of 10 people serving now.
We have, we have many vacancies on these boards right now. Sorry, I didn't understand the question.
So nobody's going to get fired?
Correct.
Okay.
Mary Alice and then, uh, Bill?
So, one thing I noticed in here is the removal and the strike through of, rather than approving a site plan, reviewing or approving an application.
Correct.
So, for example, on page eight, F, number three, approval of an application shall require a simple majority. Why, why has that been changed? I mean, that's a difference, a site plan and an application.
So what I did was I went back to the guidelines that really guide all of the decisions of all of the boards, to make sure that when this language was approved initially, it reflected the guidelines. So what I found was that the guidelines for the MOR district, when they first were approved in 1991 or thereabouts, they talked about a site plan approval. But when things were changed in the early 2000s, and the structure of that board went from a staff board to, to an appointed board, and they changed the guidelines, or they added guidelines, rather, then the language changed from being a site plan approval to sort of a larger package. So what this does is it, it recognizes that the, the review board is supposed to be looking at the larger package, not just a 2D site plan, because that's what the, the guidelines reflected in 2003 or '04. So it's, it's recognizing that the MOR, the purview of the MOR board expanded between when it was first created to when the guidelines were created in 2003. I should check that date.
So I'm curious, I've heard this before, where guidelines are for, for different boards and so forth. Does, do the guidelines require city council approval, or is that something that staff creates?
No, all of the guidelines are actually incorporated within the zoning ordinance by reference.
Okay.
So they are approved by city council.
Okay. I have two more questions, do you want me to hold them?
No, go ahead.
Okay. My second question has to do with, A, I really appreciate the fact that you went, did all the strike throughs and so forth, but B, I am a little lost in something, so please bear with me. At the very end, starting on page 16, you basically.
16 of the strike through?
Sorry, 15. The whole thing is stricken through, right? Because it's the Design Review Board and we're merging them.
Yes.
And so I'm curious, has, how is that, has that all been incorporated now into, has that entire section, all the things, is anything being taken away from what the Design Review Board did? All of those elements have been incorporated into this new board?
Yes.
Is that correct?
What I've done was I, I took everything in the Design Review Board section, and where it matched exactly, in, where it matched exactly the MOR Development Review Board, I just kind of deleted it from the Design Review Board section, where there were inconsistencies, like, for instance, whether or not one board gets a vice chair and the other board doesn't get a vice chair. I said, well, that's silly, let's make everybody, you know, let's have a vice chair. I have explained in the memo each location where there was an inconsistency, because you, you've got to, you know, you've got to merge them the best that you can.
Sure.
Where there are specific things that were just for MOR or just for one of the districts, those are outlined very specifically to say this section applies just to MOR, or this section applies just to East Urbana. And one place where those changes applied just to East Urbana, for instance, is in my review of those guidelines, I saw that the guidelines talked about how single-family homes should be exempt, but that never made it into the code. So that means as zoning administrator, I couldn't exempt things, exempt projects. So I did take this opportunity to add something like that here, because it was abundantly clear in the guidelines that they should be exempt. So I, I outlined to the nth degree where things did not line up, so yes, everything is in there in some capacity, unless it's, you know, it's a zoning administrator instead of secretary or something, I didn't bother with noting each of those changes, so.
Okay. And my last question is, and you and I have talked about this, so unlike the, the zoning commission and the planning commission, in which it has to go through both of those boards, and then it comes to city council for final approval, the, these boards do not, they are the final approval.
That's correct.
And you and I had talked a bit about how can we replicate the planning commission and the zoning in terms of can these items come to council for final approval? I'm wondering if this is an opportunity for us to do that, or if there are any objections or we would like to discuss that.
Well, I will say that that was not advertised as part of this text amendment, nor was it presented to Plan Commission, so it may be beyond sort of the intent of this amendment. The intent of the amendment really was to combine the boards and, you know, fix the language that was inconsistent. So that would be a, a larger policy change, and I was not given direction to tackle that at this point.
Okay.
Eric?
Yeah, I, I agree that that's outside of the appropriate boundaries of any decisions we could take here, but I would be in favor of discussing that at some point, because the fact that some commissions are the last word, others have to get council approval, leads to a very, very, I mean, I, I really got, I don't know if you remember, it was important to me, but maybe not so much to other people, but I really got burnt on that by, on behalf of constituents, expressing an opinion about the, about something that was at more. And, and then, it got transmogrified into a Historic Preservation issue, it came before the council, and I was disqualified from, you know, I, I was declared that I had a conflict. So, and, you know, I, I think the potential, I think the fact that some of these are, the commission is final word, where it would be appropriate for a council member to say, hey, my folks, you know, but then, because it, because I think a lot of these things do have the potential to shift from Design Review Board to Historic Preservation, because there are some older structures in these, in these areas. So, so anyway, I, I would like to consider the issue you raise at some future time.
Bill?
Yeah, for, for the appeal process, if it's denied, they have a certain number of days to resubmit if they want to change a few things, is that right?
Well, we would, we wouldn't call it necessarily the appeal process if, and this happens at the Design Review Board in that the board may have some suggestions, well, if you were to tweak that roof line, we would probably think that it would fit in better and we would approve it. So there, the ordinance outlines some options, so the applicant could say, okay, well, I can have that ready by next week, so can you pick a date and declare that meeting and then come back then? If they can't do that, then they can say, okay, and then resubmit something with the new design, and then have that meeting scheduled, which would be different from a, for instance, if they got a denial and they wanted to appeal that decision, that would go to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
ZBA, okay. And is, was that the same for both boards before? That process, the resubmit and the?
It was, if it wasn't identical, it was really similar. I, there, there was one tweak that I, that I mentioned that had said that if you resubmit, at least in one of the boards, if you resubmit, staff will turn it around in 30 days and have a meeting. I'm suggesting it be consistent with a new application at 45 days, but otherwise, that was probably the biggest, the biggest difference between the two.
Okay. And then, as far as the special use and conditional use, I didn't realize that those always had to go to the review boards. Was that always the case in both, and for both, for all three districts, the special use and conditional use? I can see it in the MOR, but the others are so design-focused, I don't really understand why the use is a.
Well, the Design Review Board isn't necessarily looking at the use, but I think what this is trying to say is, go get your special use permit first, so that, am I getting this out of order? To ensure that the use is appropriate before you come to us and we'll tell you whether or not it's, the design works. So it just, it just, it's, it clarifies the process so that people aren't always wondering, well, which do I do first? So it just outlines which.
So they get the special use or, or conditional use from the ZBA and the council for the special use, and then they go back to the review board?
Well, I need to double-check what's the order, because to be honest, I, I couldn't, I can't remember everything in this text.
Okay. But for both boards before, did they always consider conditional use and special use?
Well, they consider the design aspects. They're not looking at the use, because that's up to either ZBA or Plan Commission and Council, but it's, they still need to go there for the design aspect.
Yeah, because they're actually just making a recommendation on those, right? So they're making a recommendation to ZBA, so they actually have to be first.
Okay, I'll need to look, because, to be honest, I do not remember.
I think that's the way it is. They're just making a recommendation, so apparently, they're making the recommendation based on the design, not the use. That's my interpretation now that you've explained that.
Yes, you are correct. So the design gets taken care of first, and then that can be incorporated in the larger package for the use itself, where they, they look at the use as well as if it's new construction, they would also look at the design to make sure it's compatible.
Okay, so ZBA should consider their recommendation as focusing on the design aspect of the use?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for walking me through that process.
And then, how, how, I don't remember any East Urbana cases, have there been some in the past few years?
There've been some administrative things, like someone wanted to replace the stairwell into their basement unit, so that gets approved at the administrative level in consultation with the chair. We're not going to convene a board of seven people to talk about, you know, subterranean There's a potential case coming, but we're still waiting for that to come in, but in, I'm sure there must have been something, but in recent history, it's been the small, very small administrative.
And anything to do with the single-family residents in East Urbana?
The guidelines mentioned that they were exempt from review at least four times, so I think they were trying to make a very loud statement.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of this item.
I'll second it.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dean. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council members, Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Last item on the agenda are a number of appointments to boards and commissions, speaking of boards and commissions. First, Housing Authority of Champagne County, I'm recommending Becca Obachowski. Becca will take the seat of, which has been held by Mr. Clyde Walker, who has served for 12 years. Becca is the Executive Director of Community Choices, she's Chairperson of the Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities Agency Council, and is a member of the Channing Murray Board of Directors. She also works, many of the clients she works with are residents of various housing authority developments, and she's very familiar with, with their, their needs. Plan Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2021 is Jonah Weiskopf. He is owner of a number of area housing cooperatives in Urbana, several traditional apartment buildings, and is a real street broker. He currently serves on the Zoning Board of Appeals and the MOR Development Review Board. Traffic Commission, Eric Jacobson, council member, this is one of those commissions that requires a council member to sit on. Eric is going to be taking Dean's place on the Traffic Commission. Dean's employment indicator makes it very hard to get back to town at four o'clock on a Tuesday afternoon. So thank you very much, Eric, and thank you, Dean, for your service.
And I thank you, Eric.
Oh, sure.
The City of Decatur thanks you.
Public Arts Commission will be, I'm recommending Ms. Courtney Vex. She's a Jewish study bibliographer, African-American Studies librarian, and assistant professor at the U of I Library. UP TV Commission, Mark Schultz. If you recall, we also combined the UP TV Commission with the Cable Television Commission a while back, so, so that was another combination that made sense. And then, appointments to the newly formed Design Review Board, Nancy Wade Drago, Scott Kunkel, Adam Rush, Mary Pat McGuire, Matt Cho, and then an alternative member, alternate members, Jonah Weiskopf. And that's it for tonight, there will be more next week.
I move approval of these appointments.
I'll second.
Approval by Eric, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. I have one last item of public input from Eldress Melinda Carr. She wishes to express continued concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. No further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.